Skeeter?
Yes, here.
Just checking in. Skeeter? I'll call this the order. Five fifty-seven. Five fifty-three, where am I? Five fifty-three. Road hall.
Chunky. Dave.
Kirk.
Donna. Donna, here. Skeet, uh, Georgia, here. Skeeter?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I was muted, I don't know why.
Okay, Skeeter?
Yes?
Nicole, here. Star, here. Six present.
Road hall. Communication. Well, everyone has pushed on your hearts and minds, they put a fair to people who got through suffering. As Russia, he was guys understanding Russian, he was a children wolf, he's not sure. He's a baby. He was a travel son. That's it. Any additions, deletions to the agenda? Approval of the agenda? Start. Second by?
Second.
Donna? All the motion in your hand, one, two, three, four, Donna?
Yes.
Five, Skeeter? Yep, six. Pole zero, not pole zero, motion. Minutes. Special work minutes of July twentieth, senior packet, twenty twenty-three. Any questions, comments? Corrections, additions, deletions? Second motion for approval in the minutes of July twentieth, special working. Georgia, move in a second. Nicole, all the favor again, one, two, three, four, Skeeter?
Yes.
Six. Donna?
Yes.
Six. Pole zero, not pole zero, motion. Carry. Discussion, I don't, and you have the phone.
Thank you, Board Chairman. Um, good evening, everyone. I would like to first bring up Fred Leader Charge to review, um, the housing, the houses that we're getting in and to discuss some of the concerns and issues that we have. Fred?
Good evening, looking for my back, Joe.
He's on the way.
Yeah, I don't know where she's standing. So, right now, we've got two of the houses here on campus. They're on the foundation, they're starting to shoot off, Stan is starting the electrical installation thing. So, those two are going on. The three that are empty yet, there was a question on the one with sewer line down the middle. So, they were trying to have us sign a, um, an MOU to say that we weren't going to hold them responsible because they're, they're trying to hold that up on that sewer line. But we are going to change that sewer line. I'm going to put a new sewer line up to the road. And the reason for that is because what's in there now is not to cool. It needs to be a six, eight inch line. That's the reason why, that's the main reason why. It was a four inch line because that was a trailer park in the past. So, four inch line was acceptable at that time.
Who's there?
Um, the ARPA Housing. I'm not sure what they go by, but ARPA Housing is on, we went, Brian, and talked with Arch Marshall in the last few days over that. Their main concern is that sewer line in the, in that foundation. They can't take it by that, that we are going to move them. That is going to be, it's not going to be an issue. Once we get this approved, by the way, I've got a, uh, Joe, we ended up a new estimate for a main sewer line for that. So that's the next step for that is to get that. And we need that anyway because the two new ones up here on the west end, they don't have water to sewer up here. So we have to put that in brand new for them up here. And then that'll bring that up to code for the rest of the way up to the middle of the man home there. So, that's what is needed. That's why, uh, when they sent that to me yesterday, I didn't think it was a good idea. So I brought it to Joe and Danny right away. And we did what we needed to do. So there's a new, um, agreement from, for our, from our part. Which better represents us. So, it's not like, what they put forth was that they wanted to have us sign off on this paper saying that they're not responsible for anything anymore. No guy will, nothing, nothing at all. But that's, I mean, that's going way too far. And their point is just that sewer line in that one foundation. So, once this all gets going, I've been in contact with Craig Curtis already. Soon as we get the go-ahead, I'll call him tonight after the meeting and if it all goes good, they'll make arrangements to be here next week. So, I, the reason we were waiting, the reason I was trying to get ARPA to bring in houses is once we build that sewer line, we're going to have a three inch, four inch ditch alongside the highway here, alongside the road. And when they come to bring that house in, they're going to have problems. They're not going to be able to get across that freshly dug ditch and that five ton house and just take it all the way down. So that's the reason why I was trying, my main reason was for trying to get them to come, bring the house outside and just set it down. So we could go ahead and put in the sewer line. But they don't want to do it, so I told, uh, started right this morning, let's just go ahead and go through with our part of it. We'll lay the sewer line and then the problem will be back on them. They're going to have to decide how they're going to get that house across that ditch. Is basically all it is. So we're trying to help them every step of the way. But it seems as though they're throwing roadblocks up here and there, you know, as they come over. So, uh, we're doing what we can. They want that sewer line out of there, so if we get this thing approved tonight, we'll start, we'll put that sewer line and send it to be their problem to get that house across that ditch. And that's going to be a bigger problem.
How far, how big, we go?
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet, yeah.
We've got the main sewer line already that's here, it's into our living station. So, that's twelve feet down from here. So we've got those twelve feet down, lay the main line all the way up to the west end over here. Then, then we'll be good to go. So, as far as I, as far as I'm concerned, everything else that's hooked up over there is, is going good. It's going good. The one new house that we have at the end over there, there's no problem. So, it's just this one house that they're throwing up a, uh, trying to block, you know, already trying to throw away their responsibility by saying we're going to accept it that way. Which isn't good, you know, it isn't a good thing. So, hopefully tonight we'll be able to look at the estimate that you put in and, uh, and, uh, it has to be more for us to stay ahead of them. And that's all we're trying to do, stay ahead of them, help them. I mean, they, they've got, I've talked to Jim, I've talked to Archie, I've talked to Brian. Each of them have their own set of problems, what they can and can't do for the rest of them. And we're the ones leading the way here. We're the ones leading the way here, and we're the ones that are going to make them feel good. Because we need it, and we know, we've known it for a long time, that we need these houses. So, this is just the beginning. So, that's my skill.
So, we did, we did get that, um, MOU from, um, from the tribe. But we wanted the language to reflect what we thought, and so I had, we sent it to Herb, and I had him call to say what we should put in there. Um, so he did, so I'm going to print it out because I had Joe look at it first. Uh, so that, if you guys give us the approval to sign the MOU, then we can give it back to Scott and then after. But we took out the language that, um, didn't, you know, didn't reflect what we thought. That St. Francis, that protected St. Francis's, um, with these, with these houses. So, um, on our end, what it came down to with, from foundation to electrical to just, it, it came up to one, one hundred and eight thousand per house, just to get them set up. And that's not even to, um, move in here. That's what it came down to, that was. And we're using our ARPA funds. We're moving, we, um, we have to re, um, we've looked at our ARPA funds. And, you know, we did put in a project to get our on-end building, we love his on-end building, for all this other stuff that came up. So, where we looked at the budget again, Joe and I, and we re-prioritized what it is that we needed. It all comes back home to these houses. There were contingencies we didn't lay to think of or we didn't think of that came up. So, we do have the funds under the ARPA funds and, and we can, we can use it. So.
Sorry. Bless you.
I'll have Joe go on next and I'll print you guys a contract to read and over.
Kind of stand here, if that's okay? Alright, so you had that explanation. Uh, what I'm going to try to do, obviously, is, uh, this is issue two of the construction updates. And I will keep this updated as much as possible, uh, which is why we're kind of late. Maria and myself are both late on, just trying to do last minute research and study. So, this is the latest that we've got. And, as you probably know, the part of the expansion project for the admin building required that they come over and start drilling test holes to tech, to test the soil composition to make sure that the building wouldn't sink into the ground or something like that. Uh, in the process, they hit our copper, copper lines, our copper communication lines, and ripped them up. Um, that cut off the, like, some of the fax lines to the administration building. So thankfully, it wasn't a lot of damage. It was not the fiber line. Uh, that same, the next day, Golden West came out and installed a backup wireless communication between the buildings so that in case somebody does damage the fiber line, that link will kick in and will still be on, it won't shut us down. So we're trying to cover all the contingencies here. Uh, but that's the latest, and just now, uh, one of the people from Golden West Technologies, which is Rapid City, spent a lot of time trying to organize our system so that we can get back up with, uh, the fax machines. That's still in progress, but we're working on all of those issues that happen to happen. The other.
The border, the admin office, no fax line or?
No fax lines at the admin office. Uh, fax line is not a big deal, however, it also impacts the fire alarm signal at our building and the fire alarm signal at the old M building. So that's more critical to get those up and operating.
And my direct line. I haven't verified any of that. That we get to do on.
So, we're working on that. Uh, and all of these, hopefully, up to date so you can keep yourself up to date as to what's going on and where progress is.
Is that your cost saving or?
Cost saving, which.
Phone, the copper phone line and all that?
Well, I'm sure we'll be coming back to with the issue that we feel the people that were digging should pay for it, um, and see what happens with that. But theoretically speaking, they ripped it out. They will probably say they couldn't tell from all the markings around or lack of markings where to dig, and I would expect that to be their defense. However, uh, usually, they carry insurance, I mean, they did the damage, they should cover the costs.
The school lawyer said that would probably be, they should have to pay for it.
It should, should.
Because Geotech was hired by the alarm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll work with that. Um, I'm sure they went through the tribal housing. Did you happen to hit the, um, sheet rocky shoe?
Yeah.
About that, alright, so that's on there. Uh, I can say the building maintenance for re-tiling is done, correct?
Yeah.
Want to make sure, it's done. Tiling of the elementary, re-tiling of the elementary building is done. And so there's brand new tile on the hallway, no dripping hazards, it looks nice. Um, leasing of the school under that, uh, five over, one-on-five help program is pretty much as it was the last time we reported. And the bleachers are pretty much as the last time, except we're trying to get rid of.
Yeah.
The wood?
The wood.
But the bleachers are in and operating. The new infrastructure, the new infrastructure, which would be to the east here of the current housing, is still ongoing. And, uh, we had the extended conversation about the infrastructure of the new sewer line. Uh, there's a number for that, that the bid came from CNC Custom Concrete for one hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred and six dollars. We are looking at it as a sole source bid due to critical timelines. And the more practical thing is there's hardly anybody around that's going to do the job anyway. So we are, we're listed that way as it is an immediate issue with health and safety to get this, uh, installable. That is their bid amount. And I can list her, uh, Leader Charge has covered that. Any questions on current issues of construction? I'm planning to put up a wall tent so that it can live right outside the avenue. Okay. The listing of requested motions, I am going to start at the bottom. And I think I ran out so quick that I didn't even read it. Uh, Pete McCloskey has submitted to Danny and Maria a list, a very long list of old Chromebooks which are no longer capable of handling the software that's necessary for testing and other factors that we use those for, for the students. So he has a long list of that, which he has submitted on a report for disposal and surplus property listing. And we request that all of those items, which I believe conservatively adds up to about six hundred items, all be declared surplus and the disposition of them is recommended to be apaged up and sent off to a recycler.
And they'll pay us for it.
And, uh.
To recycle it, and money will come back.
They'll, they'll give us some money to recycle the bits and pieces, depending on current market prices. So that is one, uh, motion that we'd be requesting. The second motion going up from the bottom is approving the motion to accept CNC's bid in the amount of one hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred and six dollars and seven cents for the purpose of installing a new sewer line, to extend this utility to cover the new ARPA housing units and also upgrade this utility to current houses along the way.
How long is that, the whole, the whole stretch?
Four hundred and thirty feet.
Yep.
About half that stretch here. That's all we're putting in is four hundred and thirty feet of the sewer line.
Oh, it's right around the house. I know.
Well, we, we thought of taking some, uh, porta potties too to stick out there.
Right off their back door.
Okay, so that's the second one. Um, Maria and I were struggling at this very last one here. There are conflicting information in the accounting manual and the policies and procedures manual and hopefully no other ones. But we seriously need to try to eliminate the conflicts and make it consistent. The big one at this time is that you have sign-off authority to the business manager at two hundred, twenty thousand dollars. And you have sign-off authority to the superintendent at thirty-five thousand dollars. And you have something in there that says all purchase orders must come to the school board if they're over ten thousand dollars. So what's the purpose of having them sign off on things if it winds up here, taking up your time? And that's what's going on. A lot of time is taken up to get here and discuss what we're believing are low-end purchase orders since today's inflation and the cost of items, ten thousand is probably pretty low. Now, the ten thousand figure comes from federal regulations where at that point, people must acquire quotes or bids to document that they've selected the best price. But it has nothing to do with who comes up to the board and makes a final approval of it. So I guess, um, Maria can clarify and add on and correct me if I'm not hitting this right because we were still discussing it at the very last minute, that, uh, we would like the board to suspend that ten thousand dollar limit. You automatically have approval at the thirty-five thousand dollar limit because that's when the superintendent's limit runs out. So anything over thirty-five thousand has to come to the board. But in order to, uh, make things a little more efficient, that if they sign off on it, it's up to thirty-five thousand and it doesn't need to come to the board yet.
I guess the best example would be like what we did last week, or last time with, um, balance, the computers.
Computers.
That's, that is probably our biggest case in point because, um, when Pete gets a quote, that's a quote for the day. And then they say, and then they say, if you don't get this to us by the week, we're going to sell them because there's such a high demand for all this technology. And then we'll lose out on that amount and then they'll put another quote and then they'll say, well, you didn't get it at this price, we're going to get it at this price. And it's really hard with technology, that's the biggest thing.
Our request is that board either suspend that ten thousand limit on a purchase order. Doesn't do away with it as far as, because you have that thirty-five thousand. And if the board wants something else in between, that's up to the board to put that limit in there. But we highly recommend not, I mean, to make it above ten thousand.
And that's just on one unit purchase. So if we're printing this all for ten thousand, then we, we need to get approval on it. But if it's for t-shirts, five hundred t-shirts that come up to ten thousand, we shouldn't have to bring it to you guys' house for approval. So we're just asking that, they either be suspended for now until we get one uniform, uniform policy on it? Because in one policy of procedures, it does say at ten thousand, you have to bring it to the board. And the accounting manual that says that you can approve, or we have to follow the uniform guidance, federal law regarding the rental purchases up to ten thousand. And then she has approval up to thirty-five thousand. So it's not really uniform and that's why I was wondering where the handbook is at. Where's the approval for that, how far is that? So we can get that procedure out of the way and work on the accounting manual so we don't have four procedures we're following. So, where's the handbook stand at?
The next meeting.
Because it's, it's been done two years ago and it's still not reviewed. But that's what I'd like to see is different, at least two different policies. Your blade policies and then your accounting manual for that.
And just a reminder, that ten thousand is the trigger point for bids.
Yeah, bids and quotes.
Bids and quotes. It's not anything to do with who has the sign-off authority.
We'll be doing the policy.
So we're going to work on updating the accounting manual. And then if they approve the employee policy, employee handbook, I think it's in its third reading. Or I don't know what reading is that now, but, um, that would do away with those two policies that are currently online. So we'd only have one employee handbook and then your accounting procedures. So, yeah, we've got to pass that along.
Keep that conversation.
That's it.
And all the, we'll see. Week.
Well, we were thinking that him, him, I and Sandra, our CPA, would sit down and devote one day to it, just us three, and I think we could knock it out because it's just your operating procedures for your positions in the business office. And that's what we're doing. We could super bring it and look at it.
Maybe wrong.
Yeah, we might get wrong, but we're going to try.
That's, um, hit proof. Okay, questions?
Stick around, I need a warning for that suspend. The third motion. Motion to suspend. And that order, how do you want it?
How do you want to order it, what should it be ordered?
That the boards suspend the ten thousand dollar limit on purchase orders. Uh, for, what do you want to do, say? Nine months? Ten months? Year?
Fiscal year.
For the fiscal year? I, I, the, the main thing is to suspend it so that what takes precedent was their signatures on anything below thirty-five thousand because again, anything above thirty-five thousand comes to you. You done with it?
I have a question.
Good, Donna.
Would that, um, that motion, would we say revise and amend that accounting manual rather than make the motion to do it?
Good. We're suspending now, then come back with the?
Come back with the revise, analysis.
To that portion?
Yeah.
Of the, yeah.
What we're, I guess what we're doing is just trying to solve this immediate problem, uh, so that we don't have a whole lot of conflicts. And then, within a reasonable amount of time, as Maria said, we're going to be hitting that manual so that it's, it's straightened out.
So I would probably say I would defer the ten thousand board, or board approval until such time the accounting manual is updated and there's one uniform policy.
Did you get that? Did you get that?
Second down, one.
Nicole moves, second by Donna. All favor raise hand, 1, 2, 3, 4, Donna?
Yes.
Five, Skeeter.
Okay.
Six, oppose, zero, not voting zero, motion carried. Number two, motion to accept the bid of CNT Custom Concrete, the amount of $196,606.07 for the purpose of solving the new sewer line. Nicole moves, need a second? Georgia, all favor raise hand, 1, 2, 3, 4, Skeeter?
Yes.
Five, Donna?
Yes.
Six, oppose, zero, not voting zero, motion carried. Technology surplus. Motion declare surplus. Move by Nicole, second by Georgia. All favor raise hand, 1, 2, 3, 4, Donna?
Yes.
Five, Skeeter?
Yes.
Six, oppose, zero, not voting zero, motion carried.
Thank you.
Motion for German. Thank you.
What's the menu?
Subway.
Subway. Be hungry in two hours. Thank you, Fritz, thank you, Joel.
The next thing is, if you guys made a decision on the proposal of SFIS High School name change to Tsitangbu Technical High School, or you're still thinking about it?
I'm still thinking about it. I might still want to look at it, yes, from students, I guess. And we could, I don't want to say that we force it on them or we push it on them to think, I mean, it's a good idea.
We can put a survey out to that, and that way you guys can see some concrete data.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll put it to staff, community and students. Joey, you got that? Need a motion for Joel?
We gave you three motions, Joel is one.
Can that be online? Yes, it will be like what we did when we wanted to start the CTE, you know, those questions we pulled, so we'll put it online to the community, to the parents and students and staff. So by the next board meeting, we should have some data for you guys.
The other thing, wait, I have a question on that. When that wouldn't take effect immediately, would it?
We would have to just petition to South Dakota High School and to Department of Ed. And because that's what I was going to say, as for business portion or EIN and stuff that's under Tsitangbu, we have to incorporate DVA. It would just be, it would just be the high school, not the entire, it's still the St. Francis. It's just the high school.
She scared me out.
She's scary.
I'll be scared.
All these horns.
It would be to Department of Ed, and we've been working closely with them. Because they know, they know we're starting the CTE. And they've been a pretty good TA for us. But we would have to put that into Department of Ed and to South Dakota High School activities. And if we do do a hard start in the spring, then maybe by then we would have a decision and we can do that. But we've been working with both. The other thing that we are...
Excuse me, go to your phone. Donna, thank you.
We do have our CTE budget set. We have, we're doing interviews on two, I think, two people tomorrow for CTE, and if we get them hired, then we can do some soft starts, meaning maybe three of the pathways instead of all seven. It's really hard to find people in the industry. The main thing, the biggest roadblock right now is like, if I'm coming in from working at OHDC, but I have my certifications in carpentry, plumbing, all of that, how do I teach kids? You know, like Fred, you know, he's got all that experience, but coming in front of kids is more daunting. And those are the things that we would train with our professional development to help them. But that's the biggest roadblock right now. A lot of them are like, "I don't teach, I know how to do it, but I don't know how to teach," you know? That's the biggest thing right now, but...
How would you do that, and how would you...
We have the, we have the professional development. We have, we would teach them how to write lesson plans, because we have all that right here. We would teach them classroom management, which we've been working on with our own teachers. Everything we're teaching our own teachers, we would teach them. And then we would go for alternative certification through the state. And they set that up really good to help people coming from industry to go in there and under alternative certification. So they're making it a lot easier for people to become CTE high schools. And that's really a big push right now across the nation and across the state of South Dakota. They put a lot of their innovation monies to CTE, to build CTE schools and to fund CTE schools. So I did pose that question to Dr. Sosi up in the barrel that heads us up, and I asked her, "Is there any money that you could give us through the innovation monies that were sent down by Biden? And we're considered a 51st state? Is there anything there to help us? Because we're, we've got this much money from the tribe, we're looking for the second allocation." And she did set up a meeting, she didn't give me a date yet, but she said, "Yes, she wants to meet with us about this, about funding a CTE school." Which is one of their goals in the barrel, to set up more CTE schools. So hopefully, we'll get something there with her.
How long does that process take, the certification?
If, if we're lucky, if we get their 4,000 hours documented, which basically could use your time sheets. I put in 4,000 hours being a carpenter. We'll use those time sheets to give them that and then train them. I mean, so this whole first semester would be that time. If we get them hired, we would start them on their alt cert path. For a regular teacher, it takes about what to get certified? About two weeks, three weeks?
Yeah, to be honest, I'm sure. Really just the process of the state getting it out.
Yeah.
It's hard for us. Yesterday, or Monday night, the news, the Director of Ed for South Dakota was on the news, and they're four to six weeks behind on certification, because of the new system. And you would be pretty upset about that. But that's what they have to do, so we just kind of put it out there.
So at least if we can get them hired, we can start training them, we can start working with them to bring students in in the spring.
So it'll be full-time then?
Have a question?
Yes.
With the state being behind, is that affecting any of our staff right now? Our teachers?
As far as, because I already inquired, especially with the Filipino teachers, they were already approved for the certifications to the state. I think it's just a matter of the state mailing the certificate to that we are already recognized at the database that made the certified. So as far as I know, if it's not, I don't know what happens up going forward though, if we hire new graduates or whatnot, I just think we'll be behind. But it wouldn't be us behind, we'd still be behind because of the state and trying to figure out their system. But currently, I don't think it's an issue for anybody to get hired.
Thank you.
So basically, we're just covering our bases to get CTE up and going, because I mean, there are a lot of kids that do want to start in their pathways. The seniors will have one year in it, and we'll try to find ways to help them get certified, because they won't get the two years some of those pathways need. It's just tough finding people to fill those pathway teacher positions. Orientation is underway, and since the directors and that, they put together the agenda, listening to the staff saying they like small group, not the whole group, you know, it's more productive and more effective with the small group. So that's how we're running it. We were awarded the Project Aware, it's a five-year grant. It's one point, is it $4 million a year for Project Aware?
Oh.
$1.2 million a year for five years. And so Becky will be the point person, and that will help us once ARPA runs out for our counselors, this will pick them up, the Project Aware, to pick up counselor positions and all of that. We were awarded an extension in the immersion school funding, the language revitalization, they will get $300,000. And then they wrote a new grant for another five years. So we're covered in immersion. The coaches, I talked to Trevor about the coaches certification. There are only two coaches right now that don't have their tests done. All the other coaches have their tests done and are ready.
$500 bucks?
$500, fine, that's what I talked to Trevor about, so...
He isn't sure.
I know, I know. He's the one holding us up. So there's only two that don't have all those certifications, everybody else does. So he's working diligently on that, because that's due Friday? Friday is the closing deadline, right?
For...
For coaching and education, because they can't step on the court or the field until they have...
That is September 6th.
Yeah.
Football field.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is that for high school, high school sports?
Yes, high school, head and assistant coaches.
Yes, high school.
Yep.
Thank you.
And the letters regarding forensic audit are in your packets, what was sent off. We sent it via email and via mail, certified letters, so those are done. And the rest is for personnel.
Do we have, you have a pamphlet if we want to? I talked to someone about the long portion part. I just referred it, if you're trying to see any question. If you have something I could recruit, somebody I know, someone within the field, use something in this school to be...
We put it in your packets in your last board meeting, that pamphlet that we have, and it shows all the clusters of classes under each. It's there. We can email it out to you guys too. But yes, we, and the grant writers that we did, that we did employ to help us, we sent it to them too, to look for any grants that pertain to CTE, so we can keep this funded. So yes, there is one.
All right, any else?
Personnel. Might see that the audit was in here, but you guys can just look that over and at the next board meeting, we can go over it. It's already kind of what we discussed, that's the final copy. Once you want to do it now, I'm game. It's all right.
See you at the next meeting.
Anything else before one second session, personnel?
Do I need to leave?
Any motion for, any motion for second session, 6:35? Nicole moves, need a second? Star, all favor, motion raise hand, 1, 2, 3, 4, Skeeter?
One.
Five, Donna?
Here.
Six, oppose, zero, not voting zero. 6:35, second session, personnel. I would have been here outside.
Is, could we request our directors to be the students?
There you go.
You were in the team.
Take your box, you take your box.
I'll see you. Sorry to get over personal. It's a very...
I had a few, but she couldn't, because it was only a copy that I gave her, and it's not the original email. But I sent that to my... After this, I can go down and add on.
Camera's recording. Camera is recording.
All righty. Few motions and we are done. Any motion for approval for, approve the performance incentive for individuals named on file to bring our school to compliance? Nicole moves, need a second? Georgia, all favor raise hand, 1, 2, 3, Donna?
Yes.
Four, Skeeter?
Yes.
Five, oppose, zero, not voting zero, motion carried. Personnel, any motion for hire? Samantha Turestri, American professional, Deborah Hoplin, SBR teacher, Gabe Haukis, assistant high school football coach, and Carol Koby, voice, emerging. Nicole moves, need a second? Georgia, all favor raise hand, 1, 2, 3, Skeeter?
Yes.
Four, Donna?
Yes.
Five, oppose, zero, not voting zero, motion carried. Transfers, that was nonsense, fed to the admin secretary. Nicole moves, need a second? Georgia, all favor raise hand, 1, 2, 3, Donna?
Yes.
Four, Skeeter?
Yes.
Five, oppose, zero, not voting zero, motion carried. Resignation, except for resignation, Ryan Hobie, Goast School Art, Kayla Moncorra, American scholar, Paul Whitey, High School Secretary, Ignatia White, Latoya Virgin, and Blake White. Nicole moves, need a second? Georgia, all favor raise hand, 1, 2, 3, Donna?
Yes.
Four, Skeeter?
Yes.
Five, oppose, zero, not voting zero, motion carried. I have a motion for approval, Joseph Reno, construction manager at risk. How do you say that?
Add it, or how would you say that for the $10,000?
Add it.
Add it.
Nicole moves, need a second? Georgia, all favor raise hand, 1, 2, 3, Skeeter?
Yes.
Four, Donna?
Yes.
Five, oppose, zero, not voting zero, motion carried.
Don't take care of them.
Any others, any other, any others? Not a motion for German? Nicole moves.
Chairman.
Oh, Donna?
There was, I had a visit with Danny about doing the report in September, so it's not set yet with Chairman Scott. But that was a conversation that we had about doing the annual report and keeping in line with ordinance that says it. Thank you.
Did you, are they going to send us the format they want us to use?
I will give you a call on that by Friday.
Okay.
Are we the only program, or is there other entities that are required? You know, Donna?
I think in the charter, it says that they do report to the tribal council annually, like STU has to do it too. I think other charter entities should do it also.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the others. Okay, motion for German? Nicole moves, need a second? Georgia, all favor raise hand, 1, 2, 3, Skeeter?
Yes.
Four, Donna?
Yes.
Five, oppose, zero, not voting zero, motion carried, here's German. 717, PA.
You all have a busy...